Hello, my name is Cindy Mata and I'm here today to voice my concerns after learning that TCC campuses have not ensured student safety by adopting the Sanctuary Campus proposal. In light of current policies in our community such as a 287G agreement, we ask Tarrant County College Board of Directors to take initiative and commit to take the necessary steps to guarantee student privacy and safety. Tarrant County College stands by a mission that hopes to ensure an equitable and inclusive learning environment for all students. This mission is not true when the oppression of fear due to current policies is existing in the lives of our current undocumented student population. According to a study by the Endocu Scholars Project, undocumented college students experience disproportionately high levels of stress, anxiety, and fear due to their undocumented status. The psychological well-being of a student becomes a barrier to students' academic experience and social engagement. There is a direct correlation of that fear with feelings of isolation. Knowing that my friends and other undocumented students prefer to not engage due to the fear of disclosure is heartbreaking. The impact of these barriers are a direct result of the lack of community and limited support from institutional agents. In addition to the positive impact on a student's well-being, we must also acknowledge the impact that a Sanctuary Campus will have to the students' and universities' academic success. According to an article in the Texas Tribune, it was reported in 2013 that in Tarrant County College District alone, 2,142 students within the district are undocumented. The state of Texas is currently in support of the 60-by-30 Plan, which has the overarching goal of increasing the total amount of Texans with a college degree to 60% by the year 2030. With this in consideration, it's an obligation of all Texas Institutes of Higher Education to create a means of ensuring all of its students, including undocumented students, attain their education success. This change would aid the students in achieving the goals of the 60-by-30 Plan. As of July 2019, the state of Texas has only experienced a 3.2% growth in degrees awarded between the years of 2015 when the plan was enacted to 2018. The report by the Texas Higher Education concludes that further actions are necessary in supporting Sanctuary Campuses for the undocumented student population is one of those actions to ensure that Texas meets its goal. I urge all of you to take this matter seriously and make the changes that are necessary to ensure that every student feels protected and respected on campus. It is not enough to voice Tarrant County College as an inclusive and safe space for everyone without actually taking actions to demonstrate permanent protection to support that statement. By adopting a Sanctuary Campus proposal, Tarrant County College will be making a public declaration of their support for the safety and privacy of all undocumented students and staff members. Thank you.
Thank you. We held a governance meeting last Thursday and all the items we're going to be discussing tonight have been fully talked about and questions asked and analyzed in our governance meeting. So if it doesn't appear that we're looking at it very closely, you should have come to governance. Audit and Finance, Teresa Ayala.
Yes, thank you. The Audit and Finance Committee, can you hear me okay? The Audit and Finance Committee together with Chancellor Giovanini convened with representatives from Weaver and Tidwell to review in detail the report of the district financials. And basically, this goes through the end of the fiscal year, which ended in August of 2019. And again, it's a comprehensive financial report of our operations, our condition and performance of the district. So upon discussion and the report from Mr. Fiss that was presented at the governance meeting, the Audit and Finance Committee recommends that the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2018-2019 be received and presented. Does I make the motion?
Second in motion.
Okay.
We will regress and go back to approval of minutes of three meetings. First, the October 24th meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Move. And a second by Dr. Morrison, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The October 28th meeting, minutes.
Second.
By Dr. Morrison, second by Teresa Ayala, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. November 14th meeting, motion by?
Second.
Dr. Patrick, second by?
Greenhill.
Mr. Greenhill, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
On the prior motion for acceptance of that report, I don't believe you carried the motion.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Trustee activities, we'll start down with?
We're gonna vote on it? Do we vote? We need to vote.
Do we need to vote on that?
On the?
Yes.
Governors committee.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On the prior motion for acceptance of that report, I don't believe you carried the motion.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Trustee activities, Mr. Barr. Okay, Dr. Patrick.
I do.
Dr. Ayala.
Yes, Dr. Ayala, I've got a promotion. On November the 14th, I attended the induction ceremony where four students were formally became the founding members of a National Collegiate Hispanic Honor Society called Sociedad Honoraria de la Lengua Española, which is S-H-L-E. And there are the students there with Dr. Alicia Zavala Garcia. And this particular society is part of the Sigma Delta Pi Honorary Society, and TCC's chapter became the fourth in the state of Texas. So S-H-E-L-E recognizes community colleges, students who excel in the study of Spanish language and the Hispanic culture, and encourages students to acquire a deeper understanding of that Hispanic culture. The students that are here in this picture are the first in their families to attend college, and they are excelling at the Marine Creek Early College High School, as the membership does require that they maintain a cumulative GPA of 3.2. Congratulations to the students, there are some of the other members as well, and their families. It was truly an inspiring evening. The parents were so very, very proud to see their children there, and I just want to congratulate the campus for recognizing that, and including the families in this event, in this celebration. I believe that this all is just a part of meeting our goal, of meeting the students where they are, and I just appreciate everyone's commitment to meeting the students where they are and making sure that they're achieving the goals that they envision. So congratulations, and thank you very much for inviting me.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment to ask you to add an event to your calendar. The Fifth Annual Community Visioning Forum will be held December 7th at 1:00 p.m. at the Trinity River Campus in the Rotunda. It's called State of the Sixth. We've invited elected officials who represent the college, particularly District Six, to come and discuss issues that they'll be working on, on behalf of the constituents in the coming year, and you're welcome to come and join that conversation. So we're looking at Vision 2065. There's some significance to that. I'll let you think back in history and look forward, and we'd love to have you come and be a part of that. December 7th, 1 to 3 p.m., and yes, it's a Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Greenhill?
Yes, I attended the, I want to shout out to the Trinity River Campus. I attended the Fourth Annual Veterans Community Breakfast, celebrating the veterans who are attending in our Trinity River Campus, and faculty and staff, and others who were in attendance. I had a very good conversation with an older gentleman in the back who went to college at the University of Texas at the same time I did, so we had lots of interesting things to talk about. The speaker was Larry Wallace, and you see his picture up there. That's Larry Wallace, I'm sorry. That was, yeah, sorry. That was a quick shot there. He was, he is a retired combat veteran, served as the Chief of Staff to the Chief People Officer and Deputy Chief of Staff for the U.S. Army in Special Operations Aviation Airborne. He's a vet, gave a very good speech about becoming a part of the community and using your, that's using their skills that they've learned in the, in the, in the Army or Navy or Air Force to, to their advantage in, in getting an education and getting back into the working force in the community. It was a very, very enjoyable occasion, and I was glad to attend. Thank you.
Oh, uh-oh.
I think that was the man in the back, that, I don't know. Reg?
Yeah, Reg.
Yeah, Reg, you're gonna be, your job is at stake.
Dr. Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Well, I was asking, Dr. Evans, do you have anything?
Dr. Morrison?
He's gonna defer to me.
I know we would.
We are so privileged to have so many great people at Tarrant County College at every single level, and I say that sincerely, and I embrace each and every one of you as a part of that recognition, and thank you for being here. And tonight, I specifically want to share the information with you that our colleague, Dr. Michael Evans, has been elected to the Board of Trustees of Baylor University.
Fantastic. Congratulations. In addition, of course, we already knew that she was very special, but now it's official. Carol Bracken is one of the great women of Texas, so give Carol a big hand. And I want to thank Dr. Madison and the college for hosting our Rotary District Scholarship interviews. We interviewed four outstanding candidates and selected three of them to receive, one of them to receive a $30,000 scholarship, and two of them to receive $40,000 scholarships. For those that are present or participating, we appreciate your, your help and your support. And then we had a very nice affair at our southeast campus. This is the Chende Rotus Air. It's a international wine and food organization, and, and we hosted a dinner on the southeast campus. It was French themed, and each of the participants brought their own bottle of special Bordeaux wine that they brought from their cellars. And so it was a very special evening. It was probably the best one that we've ever done. It's just absolutely fantastic. And the whole purpose of this, of course, is to raise money for scholarships for our colony art students, and to give them recognition. And they prepare for these dinners every, every semester, as if it's a final exam, and they just put their real, their hearts and souls into it. And we actually, this time, we raised $5,040 for the college for colony art scholarships. We'll now consider the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
By?
Go ahead.
By Dr. Morrison, second. By?
Second.
Third, by Mr. Greenhill?
Oh, third.
That, that's okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item six, consideration and approval of, of an approval of contract renewal with ThyssenKemp Elevator Corporation to provide district-wide elevator maintenance services in the amount of $234,464.16.
Yes, sir. This will provide for monthly maintenance and service calls for our 57 elevators and two escalators.
Questions, discussion? All in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Is it already done?
Would you make a motion? Doc, yes, Bill Greenhill, motion, second by, I'm gonna say Ayala, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Well, I was asking, Dr. Evans, do you have anything? Dr. Morrison?
Just gonna defer to me.
I know we would.
We are so privileged to have so many great people at Tarrant County College at every single level, and I say that sincerely, and I embrace each and every one of you as a part of that recognition, and thank you for being here. And tonight, I specifically want to share the information with you that our colleague, Dr. Michael Evans, has been elected to the Board of Trustees of Baylor University.
Fantastic. Congratulations. In addition, of course, we already knew that she was very special, but now it's official. Carol Bracken is one of the great women of Texas, so give Carol a big hand. And I want to thank Dr. Madison and the college for hosting our Rotary District Scholarship Interviews. We interviewed four outstanding candidates and selected three of them to receive, one of them to receive a $30,000 scholarship and two of them to receive $40,000 scholarships. And for those that are present or participating, we appreciate your help and your support. And then we had a very nice affair at our Southeast Campus. This is the Chende Rotisair. It's an international wine and food organization, and we hosted a dinner on the Southeast Campus. It was French themed, and each of the participants brought their own bottle of special Bordeaux wine that they brought from their sellers, and so it was a very special evening. It is probably the best one that we've ever done. It's just absolutely fantastic. And the whole purpose of this, of course, is to raise money for scholarships for our Colony Arts students and to give them recognition. And they prepare for these dinners every semester as if it's a final exam, and they just put their real, their hearts and souls into it. And we actually, this time, we raised $5,040 for the college for Colony Arts scholarships. We'll now consider the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval? Go ahead.
By Dr. Morrison, second. By?
Second.
Third by Mr. Greenhill?
Oh, third.
That's okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item six, consideration and approval of, of an approval of contract renewal with ThyssenKemp Elevator Corporation to provide district-wide elevator maintenance services in the amount of $234,464.16.
Yes, sir. This will provide for monthly maintenance and service calls for our 57 elevators and two escalators.
Questions, discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve it.
Would you make a motion? Doc, yes, Bill Greenhill, motion, second by Ms. Ayala, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Consideration and approval of contract with Freedom Construction to provide Northeast Campus Academic Classroom Building and Health Sciences Building Classroom renovations in the amount of $156,451.07.
This is, project is for basic renovation and furniture.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Barr?
Mr. Barr made a motion, and Mr. Greenhill will second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item eight, consideration and approval of lease and maintenance agreement contract with Chambers Engineering to provide brick assessment scaffolding at Northwest Campus in the amount of $361,776.64.
Yes, sir. This will provide continued safety for our students, faculty, and staff as we develop our redevelopment of the Northwest Campus.
Motion by Dr. Patrick, second by Dr. Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item nine, consideration and approval of contract with Trevino Group, Inc. to provide Trinity River Campus Fitness Center renovations in the amount of $250,526.31.
This is for a refresh of an 18-year-old facility.
Move approval?
Dr. Morrison, move approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Consideration, item 10, consideration and approval of purchase from Dell EMC for upgrading storage controllers and increasing storage at the TCCD Data Center and Disaster Recovery Site in the amount of $126,594.14 not to exceed.
Yes, due to warranty changes and our renewal, that we're gonna have to upgrade our Dell Storage Solution at our Allen Data Center, and this is what that is for.
Any discussion, question, move for approval? Dr. Evans, second by Ms. Ayala, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 11, consideration and approval of purchase of a two-year Elsevier HESI Legacy Cohort Quote to provide access codes to the Nursing Department graduating class of 2021 in the amount of $137,42.50.
As you said, this is the access codes for the Elsevier 2021 nursing students and their cohort, 2021 cohort.
Questions?
Move approval?
Motion by Dr. Morrison, second by Ms. Ayala, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Just like to make a statement that in the future, since we discuss these items in great detail in our governance meeting, any item for approval that's less than a million dollars, we'll put on our consent agenda going forward. Item 12, consideration and approval of resolution slash contract for TCCD 2019-21 Insurance Renewal with McGriff, Seibels, and Williams, RHSP, and Higginbotham in the amount of $1,218,238.
Yes, sir. This is for our annual insurance renewal policies for 18 different lines of coverage.
Questions, discussion? Motion by Dr. Evans?
Second.
Second by Dr. Morrison, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Monthly financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've been waiting for this.
Well, I'm glad I'm here again. So basically, we've had two months of the fiscal year, and we're right where we would think that we would be at about 15.6% on income and 17.1% on expenses. As far as the investments go, we do have a decrease in our pools, which is consistent with our pattern at this time of the year when our outflows exceed our inflows, but we're on track there and at about 362 days for the weighted average maturity. Be happy to answer any questions.
You see anything that we need to be concerned about?
Not a thing.
Good.
No, sir.
Thank you. Chancellor's Report.
Thank you. Mr. Heath, we have a number of new staff introductions this evening. Dr. Jordan, would you lead us off, please?
Good evening, Chancellor Giavonini, President Heath, members of the board. It is my honor to introduce you to Laura McKinnon. I'm pleased to introduce Laura as the new Director of Library Services at the South Campus. Laura's most recently served as Dean of Educational Resources at Richland College, where she led a department of 16 full-time professional librarians and staff. Prior to joining Dallas County Community College District, she served three years at the University of North Texas Libraries. Previously, she served as Public Service Librarian and Assistant Professor at the D.J. Kelly Law Library at Texas Wesleyan School of Law. There, she taught courses in advanced legal research. She is the co-author of the book, The Teaching Librarian: Web 2.0 Technology and Legal Aspects. As a resident of Fort Worth for the past 10 years, Laura is excited to begin her work at TCC in order to serve her local community. She received both her J.D. and her Master's in Library Information Systems from Florida State University, and her Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Florida. Please help me welcome Laura McKinnon to TCC.
Hello. Thank you very much for the warm welcome. I'm really excited to join TCC. The Learning Commons Principle is what drew me to the position, so I'm really looking forward to working on the Learning Commons Advisory Panel in order to bring our services and our spaces into the future to better serve our students. I have some previous experience at past institutions creating Learning Commons-style spaces, so this is a great opportunity to expand on that and in a broader scope. And on a personal note, I have a five-year-old son who's in pre-K at South Highmount Elementary School here in Fort Worth, so I'm really excited to be working in Tarrant County again and serving our local community. Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor and Board. I'm proud to announce Macario Belmonte as the new Assistant to the President for the Northeast Campus. Mac has lived in Fort Worth his entire life and is the first member of his family to graduate from high school. He comes to us internally from Corporate Solutions and Economic Development, where he has worked as the Coordinator of Workforce Training for the past five years. Mac is well-known and well-liked throughout the district. Training for the past five years and prior to being with TCC, Mac worked for several years with the Tarrant County Workforce Board. Mac holds an MBA from Texas Women's University, a bachelor's degree from Texas Wesleyan University, and he also holds an associate's from Tarrant County Junior College. Mac sits on the boards of Interlink North Central Texas and Lakework ISD, and is a certified project manager. Mr. Belmonte is a proud product of Fort Worth and TCC, where he has cultivated careful compassion for many who have not had the opportunity to live the American dream. Please help me welcome Mac Belmonte.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Chairman, Chancellor, members of the board, it touches me here. You know, for me, these past weeks, being on campus and seeing the same students that I was, they're in their shoes. You know, didn't have no idea. I was your non-traditional student. You know, instead of a two-year plan, I was on a five-year plan because I worked full-time. And so to me, to ripple that and to, and to really be able to make an impact on the students that we serve, I am more than delighted, you know, to be able, you know, to be in this post. And so again, thank you for everyone that has always been there behind the scenes. My champions. I cannot tell you the blessing to be standing here before you, and thank you again.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Gordon Wright as the new Director of Information Security for TCC after a long search. He's also designated as our Chief Information Security Officer for the Texas DIR. Gordon will be responsible for leading the information security effort to establish an inclusive and comprehensive information security program. Previously, as Information Security Manager, Gordon led the information technology program for SSH Design, a consultant and engineering firm working out of Kuwait. Gordon has over 20 years of information communications and technology experience that range from large enterprise to small and medium-sized organizations. Gordon received his bachelor's degree in telecommunications management from DeVry University and a master's degree in information security and assurance from Western Governors University. Additionally, he has earned virtually every professional security certification in the industry. Please help me welcome Mr. Gordon Wright.
Thank you, Bob, for the warm welcome. Thank you for this opportunity to be a part of this great university. And I grew up in this area, so I'm from, you know, Richland Hills area, and so I'm happy to be back in Fort Worth, coming from Kuwait, and it's a great honor to be a part of Tarrant County College. Thank you very much.
Dr. Madison?
Thank you, Chancellor Giavonini, President Heath, Board of Trustees. I am pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. DeShanta Holmes as the new Assistant to the President for the Trinity River Campus. Dr. Holmes is no stranger to this role, having served as Special Assistant to the President at Lone Star College, University Park for the past three years. At Lone Star, Dr. Holmes enjoyed a progressive 13-year career, including positions as Associate Dean, Director of Admissions and Outreach, Program Coordinator for Biology Labs, Program Manager of Student Success Initiatives, and Academic Advisor. Additionally, Dr. Holmes established strong relationships with industry and community partners such as Klein Independent School District, Nobre Energy Incorporated, Houston Northwest Chamber of Commerce, and Houston Methodist Willbrook Hospital. Dr. Holmes earned a doctorate in educational leadership from Sam Houston State University, a Master of Science in Biology from Texas Southern University, and a Bachelor of Science in Biology from Jackson State University. Please join me in welcoming Dr. DeShanta Holmes.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Dr. Giavonini, Mr. Heath, Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to serve Tarrant County College students and community. I am delighted to bring my collaborative leadership style, my higher education experience, and my creativity to the Trinity River Campus as I work alongside Dr. Madison and his amazing team. I am also excited to support the college system's three goals and eight principles. Again, thank you for the opportunity to become a part of the TCC family.
Just a few items I'd like to spend some time on. First of all, the obvious one. Thank you all for all your hard work the last three and a half-plus years in putting together our bond package. Obviously, you did a good job. It was successful, so congratulations to all, and thank you for the board's support in moving in that direction. Two other items, one which gives, both give recognition to the college, one which has been very public and one which has not. The public one has been that each year, the Aspen Institute recognizes 150 community colleges in the country for their exceptional service, recognition for the good work that they do, and there are about 1,200 community colleges in the country. So this year, the Aspen Institute has recognized Tarrant County College as one of those 150, and you've seen some publicity on that. On November 5th, I had the opportunity to go over to Microsoft's office in Irving along with Bob Pacheco and Caroline Hamilton, and you can think, well, that's not such a big deal. You go over to the Microsoft office and you talk to them. Well, the person that we were invited by and we spoke with was Satya Nadella, and Satya is the CEO of Microsoft. And he had been informed by the work that we, from the staff at Irving, the work that we're doing, and we were the college, if you will, that he wanted to meet with. And so we had a very good discussion. Bob and Caroline did an excellent job in certainly discussing what we're doing, where we're going, how we're positioning ourselves. And I believe as a result of that discussion, which I did not contribute much at all, I think we're gonna see some great benefits and opportunities in the future as a result of that. Those kind of things just don't happen every day, and so we're very excited. So Bob and Caroline, thank you very much. But again, there's a lot of work that goes on at this college to ensure, to put us in a position like that where the CEO of Microsoft would want to speak to us. So there's a lot of work behind that went into that invitation. So thank you, folks, very much, and congratulations.
That's great. The TCC Board will conduct a closed meeting as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code in order to A. seek the advice of its attorneys, B. deliberate real property manners, C. deliberate personnel manners, or D. deliberate security devices or security audits. We do anticipate some action items after we reconvene.
The board will now reconvene in open session at 7:08 PM. And I will entertain a motion to approve the request from the City of Hurst to dedicate a portion of TCC Road at Northwest Northeast Campus as a public street and to authorize the Chancellor to execute the plat and any other documents necessary to complete this dedication. Do I hear a motion?
A second.
By Dr. Patrick and a second by Ms. Ayala. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Secondly, is there a motion to continue the district's existing Section 457 F Deferred Compensation Program for the calendar year 2020 and to permit the Chancellor to defer up to $200,000 of compensation that he receives in calendar year 2020 into this plan?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Greenhill, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.